Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on a mission for God in the visible, with liberty and justice.
That's correct. Tennessee Father, thank you so much for another week here in Montgomery County. Thank you for bringing us together to do this with the county. As we celebrate Thanksgiving this week, I just asked that everyone have a little time to take time to reflect on whether they're thankful for the guests of the family's, the state travels to and from for this Thanksgiving holiday season.
My name is Dan Gard, President of the Board of Commissioners. The first item on our agenda is the consent agenda.
I'd move to approve.
Second.
Need discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Next is a public hearing. RZ 2025-4 petition to rezone parcel from agriculture to commercial. The petitioner is Dollar General Partners LLC at this time. We'll open the hearing. Eight oh one. Mark?
Your case number is RZ 2024-4. Petitioner is DG Partner LLC. The landowner is Byron Fugit. The location is 11,000 block of US 231 North, and it is rezoned from agricultural to commercial. About today you conduct a public hearing to rezone parcel from ag to commercial. The parcel is located northeast corner of US 231 and 1100 North. The parcel is still in the subdivision process as drainage review has not been completed. The parcels are currently used as row crop agricultural. The adjacent properties are agricultural and low-density residential. It is located just outside the town of Linden. Linden jurisdiction incorporates the southwest corner of the same intersection. The proposed purpose for the rezone is the property for is the Dollar General store. Access to the property is designed from 1100 North. The planned access meets the minimum requirements of the zoning code for separation. The location of the entrance is 120 to 130 feet off of the intersection with the traffic on 231, and the short distance staff did recommend a traffic study for that intersection. Staff also recommended paving 1100 North in the frontage of the property. The property does not have any special flood hazard area or wetland. Property does however have a gas transmission line, pipeline approximately 80 feet from 231 running parallel to 231. The proposed will be connected to the town of Linden Utilities for sewer and water. All other ordinances could be addressed favorably. Table A use table requires convenience stores to be zoned commercial. Commercial bulk standards include landscaping, lighting, parking, and signage. The proposed use can meet those bulk standards. The rezone was noticed for the Commissioners' meeting on November 13th. The Plan Commission did give the rezone a favorable recommendation with four conditions. Traffic study at the intersection of NDOT and NDOT approval. Number two, hard paving surface from of 330 feet of 1100 North. Three, rezone application for convenience store only, no other commercial use allowed, and its staff recommends hours of operation to be set 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Staff does recommend approval with conditions.
At this time, is there anybody from Dollar General would like to speak?
Yes, my name's Pat Cunningham, and I'm with Vestor and Associates Incorporated, Land Surveying Engineering Firm in Lafayette, and we're representing Dollar General. We've got several conditions on this which I would like to talk to you about. One, 333 feet of paving of the county road, which we agree with county highway on that issue. And the other seven hours of 7 to 11, in which we agree with those issues. The rezoning itself is being limited to just a convenience store, not anything else that falls within that rezone. And we would question that as to why we're being restricted there because we do not do gas, and it's just a retail store like any other grocery store, only it's small. So we're wondering why we're being restricted to just a convenience store. Would like that possibly removed if possible. If not, it's not, it won't stop our project. It's not a big issue, but my developers are concerned about that. Then we get involved with State Highway. That's a deal killer. We've had two meetings with them in hopes to have things settled so that we can have a clean meeting here. They're not very cooperative. One, they wanted us to move our entrance about 30 feet further west or 30, further east, because they said we could only have car storage for four cars. And I can pass this drawing around if you want, but we can store 13 cars easily with our current layout rather than four. And we've talked to the highway about that. We had a meeting with five or six engineers, about six engineers. So you can imagine that, how fun that was. And they did agree that storage was there and that we could get 13 cars. They did agree that this was a low-impact site and that that intersection is the intersection for Cargill. And I think most of you know that Cargill has a lot of trucks and a lot of semis that go west. We're east. So they want a traffic study. And during the conversations, they have stated that this project has no impact on that intersection. They've stated that if there's a requirement of a stoplight at that intersection, it won't be because of this project. They've stated that Cargill's the problem at that intersection. But they want us to do the traffic study, which we won't be able to get a traffic study. We've already inquired about getting a traffic study and won't be able to get it until after sometime in February. Then in our meetings, they talked about the possibility of us participating in a stoplight. I've done that before. The last stoplight I got conned into doing cost me $250,000. This is a small general store. They like to locate in rural areas for the rural communities. We're not big dollar. Then they talked about if the traffic study created warrants for a stoplight, they'd want us to participate. Then they said, it looks like we're probably going to need a couple more lanes too, and they'd want us to participate. Then they said, and they'd want us also to donate right of way. Now, needless to say, just what I've stated here, we've already killed the project if you are forcing us to that. We do not need a permit from State Highway. We are coming off the county road and we are improving the county road. We are not the problem of that intersection and won't be the problem. We're low-impact. So for that reason, I would ask for you to eliminate that condition on our zoning. If we can't eliminate it, we'd like to continue to argue and negotiate with the state, but you've tied our hands if you approve it with that condition. We have nowhere to negotiate, other than just them tell us what to do, and this project can't even begin to afford putting a light in there or putting new lanes in, and then also putting clear out to February of next year for approval. Or just for the traffic study. That doesn't mean we get the State Highway approval. So it's vague of what we're going to get from the State Highway. It just says you're requiring an approval and a traffic study. So could you help us in eliminating that? Or if you can't, then we need a continuance to continue to try to negotiate with the state. Again, we've already met with the state twice, and then we've been on the phone trying to get decisions from them so that we can make our own decisions, and we're not getting anywhere with them. With that, I would entertain any questions?
I don't have any questions at this time being that it's a public hearing. It's on the agenda here for the ordinance itself, so if we allow, if there's anybody else here, I'd ask, as part of the flow and the format of the meeting.
I understand.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in the public hearing for the rezone? Hearing none. I'll note that the public hearing is closed at 8:13. Good point. Mark, would you want to come up and address the point of the, the last point of what Mr. Cunningham has concerns with?
Yeah, myself and the Highway Director have both had video calls with NDOT, and I will agree, most of their issues are with the Cargill possible expansion, not with Dollar General. Most of the discussion that we had during that meeting was related to the fact that they don't think that Dollar General should have to pay for this. So I just wanted to reiterate that. In that meeting, they basically were talking about a left turn lane coming from the north, which, number one, I didn't understand with the amount of traffic we're talking about. So that's when they started talking about the Cargill expansion. So most of that discussion was not related to Dollar General, and I agree with the minimal impact. I mean, if you drive up 1100 North at, up 231 at 1100 North at any time of the day, you can tell what that intersection has, except for during harvest. So it is affected by Cargill mostly. But other than that, that particular meeting with NDOT, I just got a lot of conversation regarding other projects, not Dollar General.
Thanks, Mark.
Excuse me. So you're not voting on this today?
We are. So our agenda is that we have a public hearing, and once the public hearing is finished, then the next item on our agenda is the actual rezone itself.
Okay.
We're going to bring this up just as a formality.
I go to different.
Yep. I totally get it. I just, we just, if anything I do up here, I want to make sure it's very consistent. So next up is what you're wanting us to address.
Thank you.
Next up is the ordinance, the actual ordinance itself, 2025-27 approving the request of what we spoke about in the public hearing. Dan, would you like to speak to that, introduce that for us, please?
Yes. The ordinance rezones property for DG Partners LLC of that parcel that Mark mentioned of 1100 block of North 231 from agricultural to commercial. The proposal did come from the Plan Commission with the four conditions that Mark mentioned. The ordinance itself, which again, this is first reading, but final reading also does contain those four conditions on page five, and the Commissioners are free to make changes to that if they'd like.
At this time, I'd entertain a motion for the ordinance 2025-27.
So moved.
Sorry, I should say, motion to approve. I will second that for the purpose of discussion. Is there any discussion? You gentlemen have anything?
My only comments, I mean, the traffic study, I mean, it sounds like it's a no-go if there's issues with the state.
Well, I will say that the situation you find yourself in, and us as well, is not unique and not exclusive to Dollar General with NDOT and any projects we have. This is very common, so it's nothing new. I don't, it is a very busy intersection. I don't know what the downside of having the study would be for liability. If it comes back, I don't know what they would find that would not allow that project to move forward. There were some things that I agree with Mark, that there are things that don't apply to you with the minimal impact with that intersection. That's the way I see it.
Mark, was they going to communicate that back to these gentlemen about the, they thought the impact of the traffic study would, should be forced more to the Cargill side? I mean, that'd be nice information for them to have.
They just stated generalities about the project and what they see that intersection having in the future, but again, most of it was not related to Dollar General.
Go ahead, Pat. Go ahead.
One comment that the State Highway made is that when Cargill came in there, that they had all kinds of plans to do that intersection, and they thought they had your cooperation. And then, for some reason, your cooperation went away and Cargill didn't have to put the entrance in there that the State Highway wanted. Evidently, they now have your cooperation. But what I would point out is, is that this is a rezone. For example, they asked us to move our entrance on our site. We dealt with your county highway, and they suggested where we put our entrance, and that's where it is. And here now, we have the State Highway, which we have no curb cut required, no permits required, and you're saying, we got to deal with the State Highway. A rezone is based upon land use. Is this an appropriate land use? Not doing the drainage. We're doing the drainage. We're doing, we're dealing with sewer, water, drainage, road, and all those others. But here, you're forcing us to deal with the state, and we would like to cooperate with the state if it's economically possible. But just the traffic study alone, just the traffic study alone, we're looking at $15,000 to $20,000. Moving the entrance, if they decide that they want us to move that entrance, that's a total redesign. That's another 30, 30, 35,000. You move that pond, and we got to redo all the calculations on that pond. This is, this is a killer. It's, the land use is appropriate. The location is appropriate. So the zoning is appropriate. Conditions like this actually aren't supposed to be on a rezone. I'm not an attorney, but there are court cases, and we're not going to go to court, so don't worry about it. I'm just informing you that there are court cases that don't allow this type of conditions on a rezone. With that, I won't go any further. Hopefully I didn't make you mad.
Nope, not at all.
We're not, I'm not threatening. Believe me, we're not going there, but just wanted to inform you.
Dan, you have something to say?
We would ask for a continuance, though, if you're going to leave that State Highway condition on there. Thank you.
I've known Mr. Cunningham well, and I like him, but I'll just say I disagree with what he just said. Responsible growth and development is one of the five factors on a rezone, it's not just about the land use. And you've gone through training, and you guys know that, that you have to do that. Now, I'm not saying you could, you could say that if NDOT's going to be difficult to deal with, we'll get rid of that condition. You could do that, but the conditions on the rezone are designed to address the issues of responsible growth and development, which is one of the factors. That's why we can say how far that their entrance needs to be from the highway, whether that road needs to be paved, what the hours of operation are, because no one has a right to a rezone. And you gentlemen have heard me talk about this before. So I would say that I would respectfully disagree with Mr. Cunningham when he says that it's one of those where if you meet, if it's a good use for this property, then it should be approved. That's not the zoning law. But again, if NDOT is going to be difficult to deal with and try to impede a project which you're otherwise okay with, you guys have dealt with NDOT too, so you know what they're experiencing. But again, I would say I wouldn't go quite as far as Mr. Cunningham said. I think that you have the right to look at the total picture and decide whether or not it's good or bad. And if you say it's good and you want to prove it, you can. The law says you may impose reasonable conditions upon that rezone that make it responsible growth and development.
Did you say this will not go to a second reading? This is just first reading and to approve?
That's right. Yeah, zoning ordinances only require one reading, so you could continue it, you can continue it, but you don't have to have two readings of the ordinance.
So continuing would essentially be nothing more than tabling it to another meeting?
Exactly. Allowing additional time.
Allowing additional time. So I did have a question for you on, you know, you stated for, one of the stipulations was it would be retail only. Would there be a reason why Dollar General would not be okay with approving the property for retail only? Are there other long-term ideas for that property that would be other than retail?
No, they're hoping to be successful, and they're not putting in a gas station, and no intention, no Dollar General has a gas station.
I'm not saying gas station. I'm just saying anything other than what a retail place would be.
Well.
Well, we have listed as convenience store, and I think he's arguing that it's not a convenience store. It is retail, correct?
Yeah. You're restricting it to just convenience store. So if, for example, let's say.
Maybe I misunderstood the word that you used, convenience rather than retail. I'm sorry.
But it is retail, but you're restricting it to just convenience store. So consequently, let's say 10, 15 years down the road, they go to sell the property, then for some reason, it can't be other things that are allowed in a commercial zoning. So you're restricting the zoning, even though all these things are allowed in zoning normally.
Which could go through another process of approval, rezone for different type of use, correct?
Yeah, you've seen this before, but I mean, there are 33 different uses in the commercial, and it was the Plan Commission's feeling that although they really like this project, that there are a lot of things allowed in the commercial they would never want to see on that corner. Automobile sales and service, daycare, cleaning and laundry services, commercial recreation, drive-in businesses, essential services, farm equipment sales, funeral homes, golf courses, hotels, kennels, machine and welding shops, these are just some of the commercial uses. So it was a feeling of the Plan Commission that although they really love this idea, that if the scenario occurred that Mr. Cunningham mentions and Dollar General doesn't make it, not successful there, that they would want the petitioner to have to come in again to you and say, okay, now we want to do, now we want to, you know, now we have a car dealership there. What this condition does, it forces the owner to come back to you all and ask for that approval. You've seen the Plan Commission do this before. It's exactly how we train them to look at these issues. There is no land use category more broad than commercial, and so this is usually when we see it. They could have excluded just a couple, but in this situation, this, the Plan Commission says, we really like Dollar General there. We really think that we're, we're not sure about what other kinds of things would be in there, so let's limit it in that way.
You guys have any?
I do. I think, first of all, I think number three is kind of a point that it's not worth wasting a whole lot of time on. He's already said that that's not going to kill the deal. I kind of think the convenience store word is a, is a kind of a broad term there. To me, we're opening it up a little more to other things than just something like what we're talking today. I guess it's all in what the definition of convenience store is, but I consider that. Gas pumps and stuff like what he mentioned. The traffic study side, all that, I'm on board with it. The fact that we've been through these arguments ourself many times, and we've pulled our hair out trying to figure out how we're going to get to places because of some of these requirements. This intersection has been a problem for a long time, and you guys haven't even been talking about building here. So why they want them to participate in a study, why they want them to participate in light, why they want them to participate in turn lanes, seems ridiculous.
I like you.
I'm not done yet, no. It's just, I mean, we're talking minimal for the problems we've dealt with, and not talking negative towards anybody else, but for the problems we've dealt with for years up there, this is nothing. I don't have a problem with changing it.
Jake, do you have anything to add?
I'm not forced to. I didn't say it in a way that I, that I'm asking you to add something, that I'd want to give you the opportunity to add if you wish.
No, I agree with Jim.
Well, we have, we have emotional. I agree. I'm not for or against. I'm not, but I want to make sure that it's the right decision. So I think that we need more time. My motion was to approve, and that's what the motion in the second is. I would like to withdraw that because I don't want to vote no on that. So I would like more time. I would like some more information. And so instead of doing, voting it down or tabling it, I would, my motion is to withdraw my previous motion.
Dan, what's the time procedure on that? I don't have a problem if we say, let's continue this, but I don't want to continue it for any length of time.
You can't, you have, you have so many days from the time the Plan Commission makes the decision to do it. You probably just continue it for two weeks.
Okay.
Continue your next meeting. You could, if you wanted to, you could, you could approve it, you could eliminate the condition A on the ordinance and approve it. Very sorry. You could approve it, you could just eliminate the first condition regarding any involvement in. in NDOT, and I'm just going on what you, you said, Jim, earlier, and leaving the other three, and you could go ahead and approve it that way. I, I, not that I feel the need to defend the Plan Commission, but the problems within NDOT occurred after their meeting, of course. They were unaware that it was gonna be such a problem.
Right.
But you could do that, but you, you really, you, you are required under the law to make a decision. If you don't make a decision, you have a favorable recommendation, then the recommendation from the Plan Commission becomes the ordinance.
Just moves on.
And, and I don't think that's what, it doesn't sound like that's what either you or the petitioners really want.
And what's that timeframe? Two weeks, you say, we're good or not?
You'd be fine for, after that, but Mark, what's the date of the certification? I don't recall.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth of November?
No, October.
Of October, yes, so you're, you, you can't just put these decisions off forever when you have a recommendation on these.
So we are good to the next meeting?
Yeah, but that'd be it.
Okay. Does that work for you guys, another two, if it's two weeks?
Two weeks.
At our next meeting?
We, we would take that.
I just don't know what's resolved in two weeks with NDOT.
I don't, I don't either, I don't think anything is, probably, but at least it gives you a little time to do a little gathering and talk to...
I would, and I, you know, I, and I'm, I would not insinuate that we'd be putting this off forever, but having, if that window is not for us to delay one, not delay, readdress in two weeks, this is our first time having the opportunity to wait. It's not like this is our second or third time putting it off to the next meeting. This is one, we can get it done the next time, as long as that fits in that window, I'm good with that.
You, you could probably fall back to your January, your meet, first meeting in January is the twelfth. So Mark, it's ninety days, right?
They did.
Yeah, so you actually, you could go until the, your first meeting in January would be the last possible date, that's right at the mark. I didn't know how that felt, but that'd be right at the mark. You, you get to your next meeting, you would have one more fallback period.
I would think two weeks if, if, if we're not gonna figure it out, in two weeks, we're not ever gonna figure it out, so.
I'll with, I'll withdraw the, the original motion then, if, if that's the case, and hope to bring it back up in two weeks to continue it and finish it.
Do you wanna motion to table until...
Yeah, yeah.
Motion to table.
Whatever that date is.
So I've withdrawn my motion.
Jim?
December eighth.
Okay.
I would second. Discussion, gentlemen?
Yep.
All in favor of tabling till our next meeting on December eighth? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose? Motion is tabled to December eighth, meeting at eight o'clock.
Thank you very much. That's closer to Christmas, so think about Christmas gifts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, under new business, open our annual highway department bids.
You have a couple?
We have a couple.
The first one is from Lawson Aggregates, Thorntown, Indiana. And it is an annual quote for sand, riprap, and other aggregate. Of Bedford, Indiana. Have submitted annual bids for corrugated metal pipe and other drainage products, concrete Metal Culverts Inc. from Jefferson City, Missouri. It's submitted an annual bid for culverts. And culverts. And structural pipe and pipe arches. Submit a bid for ice control salt. Stello Products Inc., Spencer, Indiana. Keystone Cooperative, Indianapolis. And other products such as hydraulic oil, antifreeze, transmission oil, and diesel exhaust fluid. Accurate Striping of Yorktown, Indiana. Asphalt materials. For asphalt products. Putnam County Aggregates, Green Castle, Indiana. Stone, riprap, ag lime, dust control, sand, gravel. And other aggregate products, a lot of them. SNG Escavating, Terre Haute, Indiana. Stone, gravel, sand, riprap, burrow, snow and ice sand. Since their regrets, they did not offer a bid, but were kind enough to respond. Lincoln Park Stone, Terre Haute, Indiana. Crest Stone. Civil Con, Jeffersonville, Indiana. Aluminum plate, steel plate, plastic liner, erosion control fabric, precast bridges, Pomp Tire Service, Crawfordsville. Norwell, Massachusetts. Submitted a bid for fuel and petroleum products. Maybe. Which they have fully safeguarded with Scotch tape. They have submitted a quote for signs and posts. Pavement Solutions, Inc. ProAgra, Inc. Cuyuga, Indiana. It has submitted a bid for sand, gravel, and, uh, sand, uh, snow and ice sand.
Submit a bid for snow.
Yeah, everybody thinks there's gonna be snow. Evergreen Roadworks LLC, Urbana, Illinois. And other paving materials. Bane Auto Windgate. Windgate gets on the board. U.S. Aggregates. Stone, gravel, sand. Milestone Contractors, Lafayette, Indiana. Pardon me?
That's the one you're looking for.
Yeah, and the last bid. High Star Traffic, Knox, Indiana. Oh, you're doing great. They provided a bid for pavement markings. Both regular and thermoplastic. I'd recommend that you take your bids under advisement, have them reviewed by the highway director, who will then return it for a recommendation.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Go ahead, Jake.
I will have those in here, so that everybody can review them after the meeting as well.
Okay.
He's got the next item.
He had me.
He is a giant.
He is, yeah, you gotta work that out with that pile of paper right there. Next up, notice to bidders, road segment, counter road six twenty-five east from five hundred north to state road thirty-two, and from six hundred east to state road, from thirty-two to one thirty-six.
Yeah, so this is a little different than what we normally do. Normally, we submit community crossings, we get awarded, then we do notice the bidders. But with the time crunch, we're gonna go ahead and go out for notice to bidders. If you notice on the paper, we're not actually gonna open those until we are awarded the bid from CCMG. So they're due in here December fifth, but we may not open those. It all depends if we get awarded from the state. So it may be on the next one, or we may not have it on there, it all depends of how the award goes.
Okay. What do you mean the time crunch, Jake?
So with some of the changes with the community crossings, we have to be under contract a whole lot quicker. So once they award that bid, we only have like sixty days to be under contract.
Okay.
So just trying to be one step ahead of NDOT.
There's no action, correct? We don't need to take official...
Do you need to authorize him to send up the solicitation?
I've moved authorize Jake to send up solicitation.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Next is our addendum to the SRI tax sale service agreement. Who wants to speak to that?
You got anything you wanna say, Heather?
I have to, I have to...
Okay, I'll, I'll do that.
Go ahead, Jimmy.
So, so basically, the, the commissioners had one property that did not sell through the tax sale, so with that being said, we've worked with Heather and SRI and Mindy to get a certificate sale on for that property, and that's gonna be set up for January tenth, is that right?
I don't, I think it's, I thought it was...
Yeah, that's right. It's gonna be set up for January, and it'll be online, just like always, it's just the fact there's only the one property, so we had not anticipated it, but we did have some interest in it of somebody that is looking to possibly purchase, so. And that all was sent to Dan for his review to make sure it was all good.
Yeah, and I've reviewed. So you just need to approve the tax... So you just need to approve the, um, tax sale and the agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Thanks Jim for doing that. Jim's pretty good at seeing those on the, on the list, and he's.
I guess I'll just add to that, why you're saying that is, um, you know, Heather and Mindy and, and their offices work really hard to, uh, this is, this is never, in all my years of being around it, we've never been in this situation where these certificates have been down to a single certificate, um, and, and multiple.
Thank you.
Have worked very hard to get us to where we're at today, so, uh, I mean, you know, there used to be, on our tax sales, we used to have forty, fifty, sixty properties on there, and you started out with thirteen this time, and sold twelve of them, so, um, they've, they've done a great job to get us to this point.
Appreciate that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Next, ordinance, second reading ordinance twenty twenty-five twenty-eight, granting the vacation of alley, or the county road five seventy north, Ly Creek. I saw lie, thought alley.
Yes, ordinance twenty twenty-five twenty-eight would vacate a portion of your public right-of-way, county road five seventy, which li- currently lies between, uh, two parcels which are owned by Bart and Joelle and Maxwell. They have requested the, uh, vacation from Ly Creek Parkway South to the terminus of this right-of-way which, uh, is near a creek. Looks like it may have been once, uh, a bridge approach. Uh, you have held your public hearing and had introduction of this ordinance, ordinance previously. You had no, uh, no public remonstrance against this request. As you know, when, um, you vacate a public, uh, right-of-way which simply sets on top of the property, um, that encumbrance is then removed. Mr. and Ms. Maxwell already own the property underneath that, but they would have free use of that, um, on both sides of their continuous, uh, adjoining properties. So today, you may take action on the ordinance as a final reading.
Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Thanks Bart, you didn't think it was gonna take that fast to get done, did you?
I appreciate you guys speaking with us.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Thanks.
I just wanted to make that small.
We'll take it. Next is our introduction, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-nine. Dan?
Yes, this is an ordinance which would create the twenty twenty-six problem-solving drug court grant fund. The, uh, court has received a nine thousand five hundred dollar, um, grant from the Indiana Supreme Court. This, uh, fund would articulate the sources and uses of the fund. This would be a non-reverting fund, um, and would be administered by the court. This is first reading only.
Are all these gonna, yeah, are these all gonna be ordinance, I mean, just first reading, or?
Yes, they are.
Yep, there's nine of them, I think.
Yeah, I know, I'm excited about it.
Yep.
I'm not excited about it. So this is, uh, twenty-five thirty, an ordinance creating the twenty twenty-six problem-solving family recovery grant fund. The court has received a grant in the amount of one hundred and two thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars. From the, uh, Indiana Office of Court Services for twenty twenty-six, and this, uh, ordinance again, would establish the sources and uses of the fund and create a non-reverting fund. This is first reading only. Ordinance twenty twenty-five thirty-one is an ordinance creating the twenty twenty-six, uh, Department, Indiana Department of Corrections, uh, Justice Reinvestment Grant. The, uh, probation department has received approval for a one hundred and thirty-one thousand nine hundred and twelve dollar grant from the Indiana Department, uh, to, for ongoing support of two probation officers. This ordinance would establish the sources and uses of the fund, as you can see in the ordinance, and this would also be a non-reverting grant fund. Ordinance twenty twenty-five thirty-two creates, um, a fund, the twenty twenty-six Department of Corrections Drug Court Grant Fund. The, uh, Drug Court Program has received a grant in the amount of eighty thousand four hundred and forty-one dollars for funding for, for the Drug Court Program. And this ordinance establishes sources and uses of the funds, and would establish this grant fund as a non-reverting fund. Ordinance twenty twenty-five thirty-three is an ordinance which creates the Veterans Treatment Court Grant Fund. The Veterans Treatment Court has, uh, received a grant from the Indiana Supreme Court in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand five hundred and three dollars. This ordinance would establish sources and uses for the fund, and this would also be created as a non-reverting fund. Ordinance twenty twenty-five thirty-four is an ordinance which creates the twenty twenty-six Family Recovery Court Opioid Settlement Grant Fund. Uh, this is the, another wave of, uh, opioid settlements. The re- Family Recovery Court has been awarded a grant in the amount of six thousand five hundred dollars. By the Drug Free Montgomery Coalition, which you have already been informed of. This actually would create the grant for, or the grant fund, uh, in, and would establish its sources and uses, and also create it as a non-reverting fund. Ordinance twenty twenty-five thirty-five is an ordinance which would create the twenty twenty-six Drug Court Opioid Settlement Grant Fund. And again, the Drug Court has received an award of seven thousand five hundred dollars by Drug Free Montgomery County Coalition. And this ordinance establishes sources and uses of these funds, and also would create this fund as a non-reverting fund. Ordinance twenty twenty-five thirty-six establishes the twenty twenty-six Veterans Treatment Court, Court Opioid Settlement Grant Fund. The Veterans Treatment Court has received a, you know, a grant in the amount of three thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars by the Drug Free Montgomery Coalition. This ordinance establishes sources and uses of those funds, and also creates this fund as a non-reverting fund. Ordinance twenty twenty-five thirty-seven is an ordinance which creates the twenty twenty-six Juvenile Diversion Expansion, Expansion Opioid Settlement Grant Fund. The probation department has been awarded four thousand five hundred dollars from the Drug Free Montgomery Coalition. This ordinance would establish sources and uses of funds, and establish a grant fund as a non-reverting fund.
Thanks Dan, are those introduction only, or we need to take action on those one time?
Those are just introduced today.
Next, resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen, a resolution establishing the intent to conduct a commissioner's sale to sell tax certificates for properties that are severely delinquent in payment of property taxes.
This is just the formal resolution required by the statute.
Right. Also, I was just gonna mention in that, um, I said that property, but that property's been on tax sale since two, twenty thirteen, so we got twelve years of back, uh, buildup.
Yep.
January fifteenth is a sale, okay. So we got thirteen years on most of back taxes buildup on that property, that's, uh, probably not gonna move it a regular sale, so that's why we have to try to approach it this way. I'd move to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen.
Second.
One question, that is a minimum bid of seventy-five dollars, Chris?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Is there any other business, gentlemen?
I have nothing. Tom was just going to mention, but he, uh, stepped out, that, uh.
His birthday?
Yeah, that's true. He did have a birthday last week, by the way. But, uh, um, our, our second meeting in December has been moved from the twenty-second to December nineteenth, so it'll be that Friday morning at eight o'clock. Usually a routinely fairly short meeting, but just so everybody can kinda get that on their calendars, if you haven't noticed, or been noticed of that already. That's all I got.
Yes, sir.
So. I'd move to adjourn.
So moved. You thought it was that suitcase, didn't you? You thought that was a suitcase, didn't you? We are adjourned, thank you.
We are evacuating out to the west side of the building, kind of grass.